Good evening, welcome to the Hamlet City Council meeting for the month of November. This time of the meeting is called Order. And we'll ask at this time to have a moment of silence for all those who are ill or ailing, or that have lost family or friends. Amen. Council, at this time you have before you the agenda for tonight. I have one recommendation on it, that we table the discussion for the police department compensation until next month, due to the two council members are excused tonight. Make a motion, we approve it.
Eliminating number 10.
Aye, second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed likewise. Council, you have before you also at this time, minutes from the October 12 regular closed session meetings. What are your wishes on that?
I would make a motion, we accept them.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, we move along to item number five, this time for comments, and I understand that Hamlet Business Development Association's here tonight to make a presentation. Would you like to come up? Good to have you all with us tonight, thank you.
Good evening, good evening. So, my name is Kenell Robinson, and certainly a pleasure to be here and like to acknowledge and say thank you to Mr. Mayor, all the council members, and Mr. Christian, as well as Chief Brown. Thank y'all for having us. I am the president of the Hamlet Business Development Association, newly elected. So, I'm still sort of figuring this thing out, but I think we got a good plan here. I'd like to introduce my board.
Good evening, my name is Martha Strong, and I am the vice president of this Hamlet Association, and I'm glad to be here.
And Amy Gwen, secretary.
Hey, this young lady needs no introduction. Ms. Bernice, so and so. Just really quickly, I wanted to, since this is my first address to the city council, I want to go ahead and make sure that we all understood what the Hamlet Business Development's mission and vision is currently. And that is to be the foremost authority for the growth of business, businesses in the community in Hamlet and the surrounding communities. Our mission statement is to promote and enhance and develop the Hamlet Business Community with the purpose to enrich the livelihood of the community we serve. And with that, I'll have Ms. Bernice so and so come up and give us a little brief description of our Old Fashioned Christmas that we will be sponsoring here shortly. It's an event that is a tradition here in Hamlet, which is something we want to make sure that we were 100% behind her in supporting, so, and so and so.
Thank you, thank you. I am so glad to see you all, I haven't seen you in so long, and everybody looks so handsome and pretty, and it's just wonderful that we're here this year due to the fact that we had such a bad time last year. Old Fashioned Christmas, of course, we did not have it last year, and it was very sad. So many people came downtown and they took pictures of the storefront, they took pictures of the nativity scene, and it was just sad. We were all sad, and I'm sure you all were sad as well. But this year, we are going to live enough a bit. Old Fashioned Christmas on Hamlet Avenue, I'm going to have a DJ. Stuart Neymeyer, do you all know him? I'm sure you do. And he's a lively DJ, right? Yes. And he will be there, and I don't have all my entertainment in line yet. However, I do have vocals, and I may have groups, and I do have dancers, and we're going to dance on the street. You know, we're just going to dance, so if anybody wants to dance, or jump up and down, or yell, or whatever, then I want you there. We're going to also have hot chocolate and cookies, and of course, we'll be giving those to anyone that would like a little refreshment. There's a lot of children, the parents have told me they're bringing their children this year because they miss Old Fashioned so much last year. And that tells me we really do need to keep it going somehow. Also... Oh, it's going to be December 11, and it's from 4:00 in the evening till 7:00 that night. That's going to be on a Saturday night. We're going to have hay rides, and also Main Street is having an event, and of course, the hay ride will be combined, and a lot of things will be combined. Seafoody is going to be the food court, and he's going to put extra things at his place, like hot dogs, hamburgers, chicken nuggets, because a lot of the children do like to eat, and of course, we can send them over there and let him take care of them. And I thank you all for letting us do this. It's a joy, it's a joy for me. Amy, would you like to tell about?
What we have lined up from the depot so far is Sharon Hutchinson is going to come and bring her harp and play Christmas music. We're going to have Joe Fuller, he'll be playing a keyboard. These are not together, they'll be separate. And then Bob Dotson will be playing his guitar, so that's what we have got at the depot.
Thank you, ladies. So, right now, you have any questions for us about anything pertaining to this event or otherwise?
We just appreciate what you're doing. How many businesses have you got so far this year? Just one, on the Hamlet Business Development.
Oh, on the... Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three is growing, I think we added one more last meeting, week ago.
Bernice, we can't tell you how much we appreciate what you do.
It's my pleasure, I love Hamlet, and my husband loves Hamlet, and I love Hamlet very, very much, so it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, it's good to see some new folks as well. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say, I'm excited about the things that's happening. It's exciting to see all the development and the buildings, and trucks, and food, and all that stuff going on in the city, what you all are sponsoring. But moreover, I'm excited about you got your new administration, your business and entrepreneurship, your business plan, your mission statement. You know, all of that means a lot. That's formality, that it means a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman, we appreciate that.
But talking about dancing, I'm just going to say, Bernice, are you going to be doing any dancing?
Well, not seriously.
Just save it, save it, I'd like to watch it.
You can have your first dance on.
Thank you so much for your invitation.
What's happened here?
We need to go forward, this is coming down from the table.
Well, I will do my very best to make it, but I cannot make any promises.
All right, well, just a question, just a question to y'all. What kind of, anything else the city can do to help promote the Business Development Association? Is there anything at this time that we can do?
Well, I think there are a couple things that we are working on, and we will be getting back to you on a few days that we are working on.
While they're here, what are we saying, do we still have funding for the grants that we need to give for the business, downtown business, things like that? That's still...
Are you referring to the contributions or the non, the facade grant? Either way, they were both cut, and we haven't added any investment back to the budget yet.
That's something that we're going to try to come up with some funding to do that, because I mean, you see, you got a building downtown, you got a couple banks this way, and if we can get that back started, that helps people decide, oh, I want to spend, you know, $10,000 of my money, or I want some kind of some grant action to help, you know, fund some of those things, and lure some of those folks in. And we're not, we're not going to get a Apple plant, we're not going to get a BMW plant. We're going to get people like y'all, that care and love downtown, that's going to come in and maybe try as best you can.
So, we should support it.
And we need to help y'all.
I agree. Let me inject on that.
I would talk a little bit about why, though. Duke Energy was supposed to have the ramp post lights over on Hamlet Avenue, like this old Main Street. The gentleman told me that they already have the ramp posts, and I guess he's having a problem getting the people that they contract to, I don't know if it's a beast or what's going on, but I heard that Mr. Matt will step in and see if he can do anything.
Yeah, I emailed him this week, the representatives from Duke Energy, to get any updates on their contract. My primary question was, we were told this would be done sometime in the late fall, and especially now that we're getting into these events, I want to make sure we head off in conflicts with, you know, their construction and our traffic control, and, you know, many people that are going to be in the area. So, I sent that inquiry this week, and you'll be the first person to call when I get a response.
Thank you. And another thing, we're supposed to get trees painted on both sides, Main Street and Hamlet Avenue. However, if we don't get the trees cleaned, I would like the planters cleaned out, and a little bit of mulch put in the planters, because it looks pretty bad right now.
Where are we staying with the trees, Matt? I know you said that's coming pretty quick.
Yeah, so, we, Bernice and I, and the president, vice president of the tree board, met on this a long time ago, and we've given them full clearance to proceed with the installation. But believe they had the trees, I think their issue was getting someone to help plant them, so...
That's it. The trees are bought and paid for, everything's ready to go, except we just don't have anyone to put them in the ground just yet.
What about the tree beautification committee and board?
That's who's painting the trees, but they didn't get, they didn't, I don't know. I don't know if maybe our work, or if all people sent the trees, or I thought it one time that we would, I don't know, I just don't know what's going on there. But we don't have the trees, and it looks pretty bad right now, so...
Do you, have you already, you said you paid for, but do you have the trees, physically have the trees?
Well, they have to be picked up from the nursery.
Are they in the nursery?
They've already been chosen, picked out, but all they got to do is pick them up from the nursery and pay for.
So, they are in holding it in earth?
From what I understand, they have already been ordered a long time ago, they know what they want. They wanted a great myrtle tree that's in the shape of an umbrella, can you trim it?
But you don't know if they've been delivered or not?
I know they haven't been delivered, because I don't think they'll deliver them until they're going to put them in the rounds.
That's right.
So, that we, we need, I don't know what we need, we need the trees, and we just need a lot of, lot of. But the only thing is, I would hate for the planters to look so ugly when we're having all these people coming in for Old Fashioned Christmas, and the planters are knee-high with weeds and trash and that type thing. At least, if we're not going to get the trees, we need a little bit of mulch, if you all don't mind.
Man, you work on that, you work on that.
Sure. It would be nice if we could get the sidewalks cleaned.
Oh, now listen, I don't want to upset that.
It would be nice if we could get, if we could get the sidewalks clean, people walking around looking and looking. On the streets, there's nothing wrong with that, if we've got the resource and the manpower.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, I can, I can pressure wash.
You can?
And I have a pressure washer, and I have a round wheel like that, that sweeps like a vacuum sweeper, very easy.
Right.
No problem. But I need more of them.
You need more?
One for one side, one on the other, on when we come to those sides of the town.
Yeah.
But I do have a pressure washer and a wheel that can be used.
Due to, due to the people that own the buildings, are they responsible for cleaning the sidewalks?
No, no, because the sidewalks don't really belong to us.
I think, belong to the city.
They belong to...
To the citizens of Hamlet?
They belong to... They belong to the board that's here.
Wonder how we could get a plan to get the sidewalks clean?
Well, we, you know, so we got water hookups.
We got wat-
Water hookups on the street, we got water hookups, and there's water hookups over here as well, aren't there?
I don't know.
And so, all we need, you know, what, all we need is probably three or four pressure washers, and maybe eight or 10 people that could relieve each one that's pressure washed. We could have these sidewalks staying here often, that type of. Y'all wouldn't be involved.
I think, I think you would be a good boss, Bernice.
I can get, well, but seriously, though, I'll be glad to, and I know other people that have the pressure washers with wheels.
Why don't you chair a committee, or get a plan up, and bring it to the city manager, and see what, and be worked out with that, Bernice? Does that sound feasible?
Oh, I'll be glad to do anything that you all want me to do.
Get a committee, get a, get a committee, get a task, and submit it to the council or the city manager. And then see what we can get it on.
I will work on that starting tomorrow.
Start, no, you'll start tonight.
Probably will. But anyway, I thank you all for anything that we really can do to make it free and nice, and, you know.
Anyway, if we can support it, we will. And I think this other, my colleagues agree with it.
Thank you so much.
I thank you.
And while we're here, one last thing, is it possible for us to go ahead and make, get some space on the next agenda to present that plan or key here? What I was asking, is it possible for us to go ahead and get a space on the next agenda to go ahead and present that plan to the council?
Which, the plan that, for the streets?
Sure.
Main Street.
Say the manager's office and tell him you want to be on the document set next year.
Awesome.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Bernice.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else tonight that has got anything they want to talk about that's not on our agenda tonight? Yes, sir, please come up and state your name, and we're glad to hear from you.
Just a quick second, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let the council know I'm ready into the record that I participated in the T-Boy 5K race last Saturday, and I represented the people over 70, came in third. But I want to tell you, it gets harder and harder to place each year now, I used to come in first, this year I came in third, because there were two new entries just turned 70. One guy ran that thing in 26 minutes, and the other ran it in 27 minutes. Three miles, 26 and 27. But I want to commit to the council, I will train harder, I will work harder, I will eat less, and I will try to place better next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the comments.
Is there anyone else? If not, we move along to item number six, and I see that Mr. Anderson is with us tonight, and he's going to provide us with an update for fiscal 2021 summary audit, or his audit. Thank you, Stan, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Every year, I did this little summary sheet, so that's what I'm looking at. See, I start off from very top, go from balance, and I'll be honest with you, even when I did the financials, I was a little surprised at these numbers. Really, really good year. I think it just shows that things were really well planned here, even though you did have the loss in the sales tax revenue. I would say that the loss was probably mitigated a little bit by the sales tax increase. You know, overall, sales tax was stagnating up significantly. And then, of course, at the end of the year, they gave you some of that through a sort of one-time shot, so it didn't end up being quite as bad as it could have been. But also, you know, the other plan that y'all did, which was raise taxes, and I think that probably one of the main things was just cutting expenditures. And one thing that can be cut is usually capital outlay. Capital outlay is one of the, a lot of your expenditures, you have payroll and regular operating expenses, very difficult to cut those kind of things. You see, normal operations, but capital outlay can be sort of moved from one year to the next, and I know y'all, y'all were very lean on that this year. And nevertheless, you had, you know, it, I would caution you to say that, you know, that the numbers are maybe not what they really, really are, because there's probably some capital expenses probably been moved that this year really shouldn't have been last year, but still, you had, you did a really good job as far as management due to the situation. And right beside that, you have the water sewer fund, and you had another solid year there also. Blown out, I give you some tax collection rates, and around 94%. That's not really where you want to be, the state average is about 97, 98%. However, when I look back at page 63, and if you were to look at page 63 of your audit report, you will see that a lot of that, that say 6% difference is being collected in subsequent years. So, I think if you, if you look at the subsequent years and take into account that 6%, I'm coming up with somewhere overall about 99%, that you're getting. You're not getting it all in the first year, and that's the number that the local government commission wants you to focus in on that first year. That's why they presented like we did. But nevertheless, you are collecting a good bit on some of these taxes that you're not collecting in the first year. Okay, we go to the next page, and that just references pages in the report. Page one is the independent auditor's report, and you received an unmodified opinion. Again, that's a good audit report. What that, what that really means is, is that the financial information that we're given to do the audit from Jill, whatever the area is, whether it's assets, cash, accounts receivable, debt, fixed assets, all that information is in good order for us to be able to do our auditing procedures, and so that, that's really what that means. Page 17, that's the general fund, and this, Mayor, is what I said, on the first page, you had revenues exceeded expenditures by a little over a million dollars, which really, there again, is sort of a stamping me. On page 19, I really, there's a little bit of, that's a little bit skewed. I really would prefer you, if you really want to look at this, on page 62. That is the modified accrual basis, is in regards to how you really did for the year. On that, you actually had an increase of $306,000, 395. When you did the full accrual statements, you have to bring in to account depreciation expense, which I think was around $624,000. You also bring in OPEV expense, which those numbers sort of skewed the full accrual statement. So, I think page 62 would be more representative of kind of your, that the city really had. Page 47, you guys don't have any debt at all. I know that you're getting, that's getting any change, but nevertheless, it's pretty good, no budget over expenditures. That's a big thing for the LGC perspective, because they're really on this periodic certification. When you have budget over expenditures, a lot of times it means that your finance officer is not keeping up with where things need to be throughout the year, and you guys don't have any problem with that. You were subject to a yellow book audit, that's a few additional compliance requirements, the power bill fund, and the coronavirus money that you receive from the county, those were the catalysts for that. The report has been sent to the LGC, and it's been accepted and approved. Let's see. Internal controls, I think Jill does a very good job, I know that she's very, very much a hawk, from what I see. I know she, I know Matthew's doing, appears to be doing very well, too. I do want to bring up one final point. Last week, I was talking with Kathy Howell from the local government commission about Hamlet, and brought up the issue, when she looked at the report, she was looking at the financial statements, and she mentioned to me that she didn't, she didn't think, and this is just her, that she didn't think you guys needed to be on this UAL, unit assisted list anymore. That she felt like, the whole problem with that, as you know, was simply that the change in allocation method made you guys a little bit at risk as to how you were going to adapt to that. She told me she felt like you guys should go off of that, and what she needed to do in regards to that. And I will forward this email to Matt and to Jill, the chain, that y'all need to draft a letter stating what you're doing. And I know you deal with Mark Baker, you already deal with Mark, and I know you have to quarterly submit different information to him. But you need to tell him what you've been doing, and you feel like you, what you've done here, you no longer need to be on the report. And submit that to Susan McCallum at LGC, and they, they can't guarantee you're going to get off the list, but I think it's a good possibility. And Rocket Hams is in the same boat with you guys, they did very well as far as adjusting. And almost like I said last year, a lot of these little small towns, they're not in the same boat. So, it's sort of, you have the ability to make changes, and some of these small ones didn't, and I think you're going to see that play out in the next month or two with those audits. So, anyway, that's all I have, have any questions, I'll try to answer for you.
We really appreciate what you did, thank you so much.
Not really a question, just a comment. Every year you come in, you give us these things, and I mean, I said it before, I'll say it again. It's nice to have somebody from Hamlet that's a resident of the county, that understands the population, and understands the numbers like you do. I mean, we, we hear it from the employees, and they're great. But you're a really great auditor, and you've always been here for us when we needed to ask questions, you answered questions for us. And, I mean, it's like you told us a while ago, you know, try to get off the list, like, you know, giving us good advice. And I really appreciate that, and hope for the relationship to keep going long term.
Well, a few more years.
Yeah, long term, that's good. And then, one, one real quick question, and while you're here, this is for Gavin. Gavin, did you get, you get the gist of what he's saying?
I think, yeah, I got it all.
Okay, just want to make sure that you understand, yeah, so we don't have to...
I'd say thank you to Jill for working in that relationship, and thank you do a marvelous job. Ken, thank you so much, more than just, you know, a consultant for us, you're working, you work hard as a relationship. So, thank you for us, and I commend you on the report. I see audit reports sometime, and you can't tell the variances from years to years, and you give us five, six years variance on that. That is definitely appreciated, so thank you so much.
Sounds like we're going in the right direction anyway.
Yes, but, you know, you do have to take into account, you know, the capital outlay and the...
Yes, absolutely.
And I know they seem to really be on top, and you guys are on top of it, so...
Thank you.
And maybe that AARP money will help also, you know, you got that, and for, I know there's some... I know there's some state officials planning on that. That's a nice little add-on really, so if you utilize it.
I hope we get some more power bill money now coming out of that new village that got passed. That'd be nice. I'll be right.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Can I just make one comment? Piggybacking off what, what he just said, so we did good as far as what we had and what we dealt with. But I just want to make the public aware that over the past two years, we've not been able to purchase a fire truck, a garbage truck, six to eight vehicles that are desperately needed that's got over a hundred thousand miles, high maintenance. Right now, as we sit today, we're between five and eight percent behind on salary. Those people could leave and go somewhere else to make more money. And that's the investment that we need to make in, and this town is to pay our people, right? We need a street sweeper. The downtown grant program needs to be installed again. Our contributions to charitable events and crime stoppers and things like that was completely cut out. We heard what we had put back, it was over a million dollars. The net of that's around five hundred thousand. We're between two and three million dollars behind in capital investments and salaries for our employees. And we are going to lose here. And we are going to not be able to keep up with what we're doing now with the equipment that we have. We have got to, we have got to come up with a way to where we can convince the Richmond County commissioners that we need to change the tax distribution back. Long-term, we need that money to run the city. We're getting ready to invest big money in the enterprise fund. And we need to focus on that. We need to not take our foot off the gas pedal and we need to hold them accountable. And there should not be any option that's off the table when it comes to holding them accountable for them paying us for the services that we give to county residents. And we really need to start that process in January at our mid-year budget retreats.
I support it.
We just need to understand that we did good, but it wasn't because we had money. It's because y'all managed the money. It's because we didn't get what we needed to get and we did not invest in our employees for two years. For two years, these people have not got a raise. And people in this county that got the net gain of the money that we were getting were able to give their employees a pay raise, and that's an absolute shame and disgrace.
I agree. And I concur with everything you said on that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, next item of business is item number seven. I have a public hearing to update the code of ordinances. And at this time, I'll open the floor of the public hearing. And I would first ask our attorney to give us an explanation of what the changes are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really just a technical correction. Um, when we had the ordinance amendments for the new GS one sixty D come through, this was just something that got overlooked and it wasn't bad draft or anything on their part. It's just, you know, code writing is an iterative process and sometimes you catch things you need to fix. And what the amendment does is, right now, it lists appeals for minimum housing decisions going to the city council. By state statute, it's supposed to go to the border adjustment. So we're just correcting the ordinance to match the statute. And because it's a minimum housing-related ordinance, state statute says you have to have a public hearing. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Is anyone here, audience, got any comments on it? Counsel, do you have any comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a motion to approve the updates.
Thank you, motion to approve the updates.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have any further discussion?
Just, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Morpheus and his law firm for the work they did in that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Is there anyone here tonight from hospice? No one here from hospice. I have a couple of proclamations to make. The first proclamation is for for National Hospice and Palative Care Month, November of twenty twenty-one. Whereas for more than forty years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones. Whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to patients' emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas palliative care delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain can be provided at any time during an illness. And hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. Whereas an increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospital is one of the, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work at its best for its patient. Whereas one point sixty-one million Medicare beneficiaries live with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States in twenty nineteen. Whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. Whereas the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice and access to individual by his service based on the patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Bill Bayless, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-one as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month of appropriate activities and programs. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand the ninth day of November twenty twenty-one and cause the seal to be affixed. The next item of business is proclamation for Veterans Day. Uh, whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas since the establishment of the original thirteen states, Americans have been willing to fight and die to preserve their individual rights as guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas we owe great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation. And whereas throughout the generations, their sacrifices have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual. And whereas for many, that sacrifice ended in permanent injury or death. Yet their spirit remains the continued preservation of our freedoms and liberties. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand as a tribute to, tribute to the spirit and determination of people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of City of Hamlet, North Carolina, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor, do hereby urge all citizens to pay tribute to our veterans on November the eleventh and all during the month of November. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed official seal of Hamlet. Anytime you see a vet, you thank him for the freedoms that you've got today. Thank you. All right, next one is item number eleven, consideration of extension of COVID vaccine incentive policy. Uh, Mr. Manager?
I apologize, Mr. Manager. I had to ask, or Mr. Mayor, I had to ask the manager a question. Could you say that again, please, sir?
I, where, item number eleven, could, could, extension of COVID vaccine, by?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Last, I guess it was a couple of months ago now, city council adopted the vaccine policy to encourage our employees to get vaccinated. Please report that we reached a seventy-five percent vaccination status in our employee workforce at the time of the October fifteenth deadline. Um, I know since then, some folks haven't been vaccinated. I think that I would ask for city council to reopen that vaccination incentive through December fifteenth to allow those that have been vaccinated, um, as the, as the vaccine, various vaccines are receiving different levels of approval from the federal government. I think we're seeing more people get vaccinated and I would like to reopen that to encourage our employees to get vaccinated.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to reopen it.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second.
I just, I just add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Why would we even close that? Why don't we just leave that open? I mean, the goal is to get people vaccinated. If they wake up first January, they want to get vaccinated. I mean, we got the money from the rescue plan. Why don't we just leave it open ended? I mean.
It's a great suggestion.
We'll leave it open ended until we get a hundred percent or until nobody goes back and gets, you know, it goes against.
But I think the, I think that's a great suggestion. If that's the will of the council, we could do that.
I'm just asking. I don't get it. I mean, I don't see why we would put a, a limit on it, I mean.
I might suggest that if we do that, we amend the policy so that we just have some regular means of processing. Right now, we, we did the, um, just as an administrative item, you know, like maybe to issue those payments on the fifteenth of every month. You know, that's just how the policy was written. If, if we want to write it to just do it monthly instead of by the end of a, a certain month. I think that's, if that's the will of the council, that's what we could do.
Get it off somewhere.
I mean.
Yeah, we can expect.
But I mean, you're seventy-five percent, you're close. I mean.
You know, everyone get a hundred percent.
I'm good with either way. I mean, I just asked a question.
When the data started, what percentage of people got vaccinated?
We actually didn't have any data until we had that first reporting period. Uh, we, we went from about a little under fifty or right at about fifty to seventy-five. And since then, I know that we have a couple of additional employees. I think so. Our number of that aren't vaccinated is around like eighteen, last I checked. But I know we haven't had, we haven't asked them to submit that information since the last deadline. So I expected, as, as we open it back up, I expect we'll get a few people, whether they found their vaccination card they lost or they were sick and they couldn't get vaccinated until they got better. Um, you know, those are some of the things that we ran into with the, with the initial deadline.
How about, what, what do you do about a new employee who you hire in the department for the city? I mean, that just stay open for them or that aren't vaccinated, do they get the incentive program?
If it was a new employee and the poli, it was in, within the policy that we had previously adopted, they would have been eligible just like any employee. Um, if, if there's an expiration date, then they would be eligible up to the expiration date. If there's no expiration date and it's recurring monthly, then they would be eligible pursuant to that policy.
And what is your recommendation right now for time coming on this?
Uh, I mean, my initial recommendation was December fifteenth. Um, I think that was a motion and a second, but I, I think Mr. McQueen made a suggestion. So however the board would like to handle that, sufficient to me.
Now, so you want to make a, a date on this, like first of January or? You want to put a date on it?
January fifteen.
That'll be fine.
What, which date?
I'm sorry.
Which date?
January.
January first.
But I, I like Mr. McQueen's, oh, just his idea to just keep it open. To me, that'd be the simple part.
But it's gonna have to have a cutoff date.
It don't have to have a cutoff.
And we meet monthly so we can revisit it.
Well, let's have it, let's make it January the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I got a motion for January the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, item number twelve, uh, who wishes to address that city clerk or the manager? As to what our necessity is here.
I'd be happy to address it briefly and, um, Mr. Strickland can chime in if there's something I admit. Uh, but essentially, this is the record and disposition schedule that's provided to us by the state. There have been some long-awaited updates to this schedule, uh, which were issued, uh, in the, since the past, since the previous meeting. Um, adopting these amendments to the schedule requires council action. So there's.
So what we're doing is passing this resolution, adopting the, the state re, the state retention disposition schedule?
That's correct, Mayor.
Counsel, what do you wish?
Make a motion, we accept.
Uh, second.
Got a motion and a second and further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. Okay, next item of business, item number thirteen, is the approval of tax releases. Counsel, we have the tax releases in front of us. I didn't see anything I thought was, worth talking about. Vehicles sold, there's insurance lasted, registered out of state, property owners deceased, new owners.
Make a motion, we approve of this presentation.
Got a motion to approve taxes?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, item number fourteen, city manager, do you have a report, sir?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the, uh, C Board Committee and all of those that came out of the C Board Festival. I thought that was a, a great event. I was proud to be a part of it and see all of our, our employees and the volunteers and the people in the community supporting. It was really wonderful. And I know anyone that attended, um, should have the, the same review because I, I've heard nothing but positive things. Um, just a quick rundown on a couple of, uh, housekeeping items for the board and for the public. Uh, we do have a couple of events coming up. Uh, the tree lighting is November twenty-ninth at five thirty P M on Main Street Park. Uh, the Christmas parade, December the ninth, six P M. Um, and as we heard from the HPDA, they're sponsoring the Old Fashioned Christmas, December eleventh, four to seven P M. Um, as far as, uh, we're getting into the holiday season, so, uh, there is some alternate, um, garbage pickup thing upcoming. Uh, these are all posted on our website. But, um, for Veterans Day, uh, garbage that was picked up on the eleventh, we picked up on the twelfth. For Thanksgiving, uh, your garbage, we picked up on the twenty-fourth. Uh, if you follow those holidays. And for Christmas, uh, it'll be December the twenty-second, if you follow those holidays. And for New Year's, December the thirtieth. So, um, you may be a day early or in the case of Thanksgiving or, um, actually, in the case of Veterans Day, you may be late. So, uh, just to make the public aware of that. Um, happy to announce that the senior center has begun resuming in-person activities, um, following, you know, just our kind of, uh, which is our dynamic response to the COVID situation. We feel like, you know, we're gonna do those as safely and responsibly as we can. Really happy to announce that. Um, and then the final item, I'd ask for council's authorization, um, to close city hall on, uh, for half a day on, or at noon on December the sixth. Uh, one of the few things, or one of the many things we cut, um, in the prior year for the pandemic and for other reasons was our employee appreciation luncheon. And I'd like to, uh, uh, close city hall that day so our employees can have some time to come together, uh, enjoy a meal, enjoy some activities and, um, come together in that way that we haven't been able to in the last year or so, a couple of years now. So, um, that concludes my report and my request for city council, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may.
Counsel, what do you wish on?
I'm, I make a motion that we approve closing the city hall offices on the, for the meal.
December sixth.
Yeah, for December the sixth.
Just at noon.
And it starts at one o'clock, one P M, then we get, and sit in the, for the camaraderie. And I make a motion that we do accept that.
Okay, you got a motion, second? Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Now, the other folks, are they gonna be able to come too?
Yeah, when you say the other folks.
We said city hall, but, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all of us.
City employees.
Yeah.
City employees.
That's right, yes, yes.
I was making sure that everyone was.
Yeah, and so all, all administrative offices will be closed, um, on that day and that'll allow everyone to attend. Uh, then we'll reopen the following business day at eight A M.
And retirees.
Yeah, and retirees and all the invitations will mail it out and email it out and encourage you to RSVP and, uh, hope all of our retirees and employees participate, so.
I'm looking forward to it. I love to see people.
And I know, I, I know I read it on the email and I might have missed another email where you, but I thought we were going to discuss the, the hazard pay tonight.
Uh, not tonight. Uh, we do have a draft policy. We can discuss it if you, if you'd like. Uh, I think that.
I, I must read it. I'm not, I thought. I thought, yeah, I mean, I, I'll have anything to do with it.
Yeah, so, uh, we have a draft policy that's just been drafted internally. Uh, there's a training, actually tomorrow at noon specifically for the, the hazard pay section. Uh, finance officer, uh, Ms. Dickens went through a pretty extensive course over the past three weeks, uh, spending, I don't know all the hours, but I'm sure it was well over, you know, half a work week or, or more, uh, attending those training sessions to make sure that we administer that properly. Um, it, we're on pace to hopefully, after the training this week, present that in the next month.
Okay.
Very good. All you got, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, very good. We'll go along down to the council, uh, Mr. Stewart, you'd like to start off?
Um, I'll just say thank you so much for, we've missed a lot in the last, you know, over the last year or so. Um, so thank you as far as employees and pay and all that great stuff. Thank you for allowing them to have this luncheon. That means a lot. And it definitely overjoys me to have that afternoon off and let them, uh, you know, have that party and camaraderie. I hate I'm gonna miss it. I'll be teaching my, my students, but thank you so much for, for having that. Um, as always, thank the citizens of Hamlet. I thank the Business Association. I'm very excited about riding through Hamlet, um, you know, and just seeing new things. Um, and I also want to thank, um, our director down at the reason that, that, that food truck Friday is, seems like it's always a hit. People are always hitting me up to say, are they having it? They're very pleased with it, so it's just some good things. I go to other smaller cities, neighboring cities, and they talk about a few good things that's happening in Hamlet. So it's very exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Sellers.
I'd like to thank the, um, Business Association for coming and all the visitors tonight. Thank, uh, Jill Dickens, Gail Strickland, the Matt Officers, for the hard work you done. I'd like to commend, uh, police chief on, on his hard work and his organization of his department coming along, finding it, being noticed. And I thank you. And I'd like to thank all the veterans, uh, for the service. And as, uh, the mayor said, when we see one, or know of a veteran, thank them. Thank them for the service. And I just wish everyone a, uh, a safe Thanksgiving. I hope to get the fill. I hope you're not an empty stomach left, and I hope that they're blessed on this holiday season when it comes up. That concludes my statements, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Mr. McQueen?
It's just a couple of things to add. Um, I also thank the C Board Festival Committee for all their work, and every member of the city that took part in that. Um, I won't even try to name them all, but I mean, public works, police, fire, and city manager. Um, somebody called in and reported there were some trees that were cut down by a contractor, um, between the three and five hundred block of Henderson Street. If you could just maybe have somebody at public works check on that and make sure that, um, that is not how it happened. And then also, I know we talked about it, and, but let's just make sure that either the trees are, are planted in the ground somehow, or the planters are taken care of. And we do what we can, um, within reason and the timeframe that we got to make sure that the main street and Hammond Avenue looks really good for, uh, the downtown Christmas thing, the parade and things like that. Um, also, I know I talked a couple of times, the, the little section there on Seventy-Four, on Riley Street, uh, going down Spring, um, still some issues. It's not, it's not been done yet. Um, I understand there's a, a dangerous section of the road where it may be a hole or something like that. Um, the sidewalk's completely covered, and, um, there's been people spotted walking on the sidewalk and actually having to walk in the road to get there. Sad part is, that's not the city's responsibility per se, but it is what people see when they're coming down. So I think it would be a good investment for us if we could get that taken care of. I don't even know, uh, could we, could we send the bill to the state? I mean, I just want to get it fixed. I want to get it solved, and I want it to be done as quickly as possible. Um, if it, if it means us having to do it, then we need to do it. I don't want to see somebody get hurt down there. I don't want to see a person. I was an officer. I inves- I investigated an accident down there where a bicycle came down the sidewalk and hit the, the column of the underpass. Trey, you probably remember that. Guy almost died. Um, at that point, it, it's not the safest place in the world to be, but sure beats walking in the middle of the street.
But we can't do anything without permission from the state to do it.
Well, and, and I know there's, there's probably some, some issues there, but at the end of the day, um, it needs to be done. And we need to make sure we're on, and you may already have some information on it. I don't know.
Can, can I address it directly, which is saying, I walked.
Please, please, please.
I walked that section of roadway coincidentally this afternoon with the public works director. And there are, there is one major issue regarding a dead tree that's very large, that's a hazard that we think is, and, and also the holes that you mentioned. I took photos of all three of those holes to email to the, um, N C D O T, uh, Division Eight Chief Engineer, uh, I think Mr. Matthew Kitchen. Um, and I also emphasized to Mr. Stubbs, our public works director, let's, let's do what we can do. We may not be able to do everything, we may not be able to fix these big problems, but we can cut the grass, pick up the trash. There's a large amount of sand. I mean, it is, it's in very bad shape. So I emphasized to him directly this afternoon, and we walked it together, to do anything we can do. And if there's things we can't do, we're gonna stay on top of the other folks that, that are responsible for those areas. So, I mean, picking up trash, weeding the sidewalk, you know, a couple limbs that aren't hazardous. There is one large tree that's very hazardous, um, and we're gonna stay on top of that, but we're gonna do everything we can do.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And it, it's not fair that we have to do that, put the bill, but, I mean, we can't depend on any other agency to take care of our people that are for us.
And we've got, we have got several streets around Hamlet that we would love to do something, but we can't because they belong to the state. And, uh, you've just got to have permission from the state before you, and they do have a tendency to get upset if you mess with their property. And I don't understand, they won't even let us clean the drain out of there at one seventy-seven Highland Avenue. No, we got to do it, and, uh, that's given us a fit number of years.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I was glad to hear the, uh, auditors report tonight. All it says is that we're keeping our head above water. But Mr. McQueen, uh, I think all of us agree with Mr. McQueen. We have so much stuff. We have vehicles that are getting older. We got police cars that are getting about the point where they got to walk. Uh, the chief has just done an excellent job in, uh, looking after that equipment and taking care of it. We've got a street sweeper that needs to be replaced. We've got other equipment down there at the shops that needs to be replaced. We've got garbage trucks that need to be replaced, and we're just going along on a wing and a prayer. So, we, we have not recovered, and I don't know that we're going to be able to recover from this situation where the county took the taxes from us. But, uh, the city employees, manager, uh, Jill, all the city employees have done a tremendously good job in holding our costs down. And, uh, I'm hoping that maybe in a year or two, maybe from this new, uh, incentive money that's been passed in Washington, that hopefully, maybe we'll see some of it, and we can use it to, to better our equipment. But, uh, like I say, then we've been two years now and bought in equipment. And, uh, that's not good. It just, equipment just wears out, especially garbage trucks. So, um, just keep praying for us. There's nothing I can say. Uh, again, I'll go back to the fact, we can't thank our employees enough. They work hard for the city, and of course, anything we can do for them, we, we really try. Um, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving, that, uh, it's gonna be a much better Thanksgiving than last year was. I hope everyone will turn out for the Christmas tree lighting and the Christmas parade. Uh, it's gonna be kind of exciting this year to have a nighttime Christmas parade. Uh, so, uh, that, the Old Fashioned Christmas, that is always fun. Uh, you don't have to spend a long time. Just come down there and, uh, see what they got and see what's going on, just meet with your friends. But please come downtown and, uh, also, if you've got a problem or you know the problem in the city, call one of us. Call me, call Mr. McQueen, Mr. Sellers, Mr. Stewart, any of us. Call us before you flash onto Facebook. At least we can tell you what's going on and we can find out, because it just creates a problem if you start spouting stuff that you don't know what's happened. And it's, it, it's regrettable to all of us, and, you know, you don't know how bad it makes us feel on council that we haven't had an opportunity to explain it. And I thank the police chief for the incident over the weekend. He has given full explanation on it. They have arrested a man that was involved in it, and there's nothing better we could ask for. And, uh, the, uh, I got a notation today that, uh, football games that are left will be played at, uh, Memorial Stadium. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
But, uh, you know, the problem, it, it's easy to blame.